We'll pretty much have everybody on mute, and then when you want to speak up, raise your hand or unmute yourself. I call the meeting to order. First item up is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, for what it stands. Welcome, everybody. Before we get started, I need to read a notice, and some of us got some instructions in it. And I will start. Pelican Rapids School District, General Process for Remote School Board Meetings. This will be due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, Minnesota Directive to residents to stay at home, and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting of the Pelican Rapids School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota State Statutes 13D David 021, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. Persons may monitor this meeting from a remote location by joining the media meeting via Zoom, which can be accessed on the school district website. School board members are reminded to mute their microphones or phone when they are not speaking. School board members wishing to speak should raise their hand and wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will determine the order in which school board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute the microphone or phone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes we take will be conducted by roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. Persons monitoring this meeting from a remote location may submit a comment to B. Ripley, B.R.I.P.L.E.Y@pelicanrapids.k12.mn.us. This meeting is being recorded. Access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as it is reasonably possible. Yeah, the next meeting, our next item up will be approve the meeting agenda. Do we have anything to add or subtract on the agenda? Brian, anything to add? Jerry, anything we need to add?
Not for my percentage.
Okay. All right. Entertained a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Public motion.
A motion by Mike and Anne. You're on mute.
I'll second.
And a second by you. Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye, but I'm going to call your name. Mike?
Yeah.
Aye. Okay, Brenda?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
And Brittany? I think that was an aye.
Yes, aye.
Aye, okay. Agenda carries. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. Barb, did we get any comments? Next item up will be kind of a tribute to Dr. Edwin Richardson. If anybody has something they want to say, it's a good time to say it. I just want to say, you know, at today's meeting, one of the items on the agenda would have been to approve Dr. Richardson's superintendent contract. Unfortunately, we are now charting a course of where we're going to replace his position. For a while, there was a great satisfaction knowing that it appeared we had the right people in the right places, and really good things were happening in every corner of my school. Community staff and students were happy. School culture improved to levels we've never seen before. Dr. Richardson clearly had an influence, whether direct or indirect, that was contagious. His influence brought out the good in others that brought our district to where it is today. We know the direction we were moving, and that we owe it to Dr. Richardson to continue on that path to excellence. Mike, do you have anything you want to say?
I can do mine's more of a personal thing. I thought a lot about that, obviously, in the last two weeks, but it's probably a story nobody's heard. Ed was a wrestler in high school. I was a basketball player. We always badgered back and forth, but Ed got beat out at his weight class. I think it was our junior year, and there was an open weight class, two classes up, so he had to gain weight. Would you remember this? I can remember him sitting for about ten days in school with pop on his desk and food. He was miserable every day. Black classy, "How you doing? Good, good." And he was just so miserable, but that was Ed. I mean, he was the team player. You know, he just did whatever it took and had a good attitude. It was, yeah. He'd be greatly missed.
Brenda?
You can come back to me.
Okay. Anne, you're on mute.
So some of my favorite memories of interactions with Dr. Ed is in the hallways at the Viking Elementary School. I'm pretty sure he knew every single kid there by name, not because he had to, because he wanted to. He had such a passion for our students and their learning and well-being. He was awesome every day.
Thank you. Ready, Brenda?
Yeah. Um, I just got to know Ed when they moved back through my brother-in-law Carl. And, um, I've really never known anybody as excited about their job as him. I mean, he would come out on Thursday nights, and the last thing most people would want to talk about is their job, but I mean, he truly loved it. I mean, he was giddy when he got his superintendent job, and he was just amazing as a friend and, you know, in what he did here, and he showed it, and he's just really going to be missed.
You're great. Anything? Greg, go ahead and mute.
You know, this follows the lines of what Mike and Anne and Brenda had said. Because it's who Ed was, you know, he was just a genuine guy. Was a smart guy. He was a strong guy. He was funny. And what I think, you know, when I think of Ed, I think of his willingness. And this maybe goes hand in hand with what Mike was saying about the big soda and all the food in the classroom. Is that right, Mike?
Yes.
You know, not everybody'd be comfortable dealing with that, but he didn't care about stuff like that. He allowed himself to be vulnerable. Gave him a better leader because it allowed people to feel extremely comfortable around him without diminishing any respect for him, and not everybody can pull that off, and Ed was able to have that perfect combination, and just like the rest of you, I will miss him dearly as our leader, as one of our leaders. And I was so excited to see the future with with our district, with Ed, Ed in that superintendent position. And I miss him, and you know, I've just been thinking about his family and his friends and and you know, Ed, you know, I was at the office today, and I still have about five or six paper pineapple cutouts, and you know, those are things I, you gotta keep around because those are the people that inspire others, and and I know a pineapple by itself isn't going to encapsulate everything that Ed brought to the table, but in a way it does because that was his thing. That was his unique way to bring attention and recognition to other people aside from himself for doing great things above and beyond what they're supposed to do. And he just set a great example for for me. And I thank members of our entire school district, and I'll miss him. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay, I'll finish it up. Um, hard to just say a couple words. I know we could all sit here and talk for hours about Ed, but one thing is our job as school board members is not always easy. But Ed made it easy. He made it enjoyable. And we can work through it. Thanks.
Thank you. Jerry, did you have anything?
You know, I think I'm on the agenda here, there's reports, and I'll make some comments then, if that's okay.
Sounds good. Thanks. Next item up will be to establish the Dr. Edwin Richardson Scholarship Fund. Yeah, I believe your Anne might have a little bit of information on it, or Anne, do you have any comments on it? You go ahead and unmute.
I had reached out to Lauren to see if maybe we could do something like this, and it was actually a pretty quick process. It was, I guess, the same day. Rudy, I believe, is working to get that, to make that happen. And just want to thank everybody for supporting that idea. I would make a motion to establish the Dr. Edwin Richardson Scholarship Fund.
We have a motion by Anne. A second by Brenda. Do we have any discussion on the establishing the Dr. Edwin Richardson Scholarship Fund?
Thank you.
Hey, Greg, go ahead and mute.
Thank you for everybody's efforts coordinating the scholarship.
Any other discussion? You know, this discussion, I'm going to do a roll call again. All those in favor would signify by saying aye, Mike. Aye. Brenda? Greg?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item up will be the consent items. Item A, approved notice to hold teleconference meetings pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 13D David 2021. B, Boy, approved board meeting minutes March 16, 2020 meeting. C, financial claims and March bills. D, Treasurers Report. E, accept donations. P.R.H.S. SAD. Bro Blake Lutheran Center Group $150 to the Dave Program in memory of Ruth Holmgren's mother. Orlean and Pat Rudy, $20. And then item F, approve the first food service agreement for 2020, 2021 with cooperative purchasing connection. Brian or Rudy have anything to add to that or ask for a motion?
Can I ask what Dave stands for?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right. Yep, so folks just wanted to ask a little bit of background regarding what the food service agreement is. Just the background on it. We participate under the pool with Lake Country Service to be able to meet all the procurement processes that the state and USDA requires us to have. There's a certain basket of goods that we have to purchase in addition to Buy American, and by joining this pool, we get better pricing. So year over year, we renew it. This is just another piece to that. The Milk Bits will become later on in June, which is very different than this.
Thank you. Anything else to add, Rudy? Looks like he muted. Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the consent items. Motion by Brenda. Do we have a second? Oh, second by Mike. All those in favor signify by saying aye, but I'll do a roll call. Greg?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
And Anne?
Aye.
Brenda? Aye. Mike? Next item is Carrie. Next item up will be business items. Item A will be appoint Gerald Ness as interim superintendent pursuant to the terms and conditions of the existing agreement between Lake Country Service Cooperative and Pelican Rapids Public Schools. Appointment of Ness shall continue until further action of the Board of Education. And so what this is, is we all know Jerry Ness as being a mentor for Ed, we've already had an existing contract with Lake Country Service Co-op. So this is kind of a natural fit, and I appreciate the legwork Jerry has helped us out with to this date. And we'll get a little bit further here in the next item up with delegation of duties after that, but I'd like to make a motion to appoint Gerald Ness as interim superintendent.
I'll second him.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? So basically, okay, we'll talk about it. Any discussion? There is no discussion. All those in favor approving Gerald Ness as interim superintendent signify by saying aye, and I'm going to take a roll call. Mike? Aye. Aye, Brenda?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item up will be to approve Brian Corf as acting administrator for the Pelican Rapids School District. And what this is going to be is we're statistically required, obviously, to have an interim superintendent, and Gerald Ness will be performing those duties, the signature and all that. Acting administrator is going to be Brian Corf. He'll be doing the daily duties here. Some of the interim superintendent duties. Jerry Ness, now that you're interim, do you have something you want to kind of add?
You know, I think, yes, thank you for that. And I think the biggest thing is, you know, my office is going to be in my home, so I'm not going to be in the office daily, but Brian and Derek and Rudy are in contact with me all the time. You know, basically, my role is make sure all state, federal regulations, make sure we don't miss any motions, help, you know, help out where I can, oversee, and then, you know, Brian with the lead there. I think a big part of it is you need a district spokesperson, so I think Brian from the district, along with John as the board chair, be able to have those items and, like I say, so we'll lean on each other both ways to make sure we get everything completed correctly.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to appoint Brian Corf as acting administrator for the Pelican Rapids School District. Greg raises his hand. You're on mute. You're making the motion?
So moved.
Motion by Greg. Do you have a second? Anne?
I'll second.
Second by Anne, okay. Any other discussion on that? There is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye by roll call, so I'll start on the screen. Anne?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Brenda? Aye, Mike? Motion carries. Next item up will be administrative reports. We have elementary activity director.
Thanks, John. Enrollment. We're at 426, so I'm two from March. Interesting thing with that is Mrs. Westby got a student when she was in Florida, so has never met the student, but is in her class, so we're getting through it, so enrollment is up, that's good. I guess on behalf of the activities and the elementary, why I would give our condolences to the Richardson family. Dr. Richardson was a great supporter for athletic teams, you know, kids. He would not only attend about every home game, but he was at a lot of away games as well. One day in the elementary, lunchtime, all of a sudden he walks in the cafeteria in a big unicorn outfit. The first grade teachers down in their classrooms thought there was a fight or shooting, something happening in the cafeteria. There's all the ruckus, and they can run down, only to see Dr. Richardson being mobbed by all these kids. You know, we always say you can't teach an old dog new tricks, but Mrs. Westby was able to teach him the Happy Friday song that he did bring over to high school and would sing that as he walks around Saturday morning's cafeteria, so. We want to just thank Dr. Richardson for everything that he did and thank his family for sharing him with us. He will be deeply missed. Distance learning update. From basically what I'm hearing is teachers are missing the kids. Kids enjoy doing a lot of their homework in their pajamas, but they enjoy seeing, missing their teachers and and missing seeing their friends. Some good things that are coming out of it is a lot of our staff is learning a lot about Excel, Raspids, Google Hangouts, Zoom meetings. They're getting pretty good at those items, and we've had a lot of our families connect to the internet. We're not hooked up before, so they are missing the face-to-face, but I know a lot of them are saying they enjoy that personal time when they connect on a daily basis, and some of them are getting to others' classes, some of them individually. It's not quite the same, but it is what it is, and we're getting through it. Mrs. Westby, anything you would like to add on that?
Anne was having trouble.
I'd like to really thank our cooks, custodians, our parents, that are helping out with the meals and club bikes. We're serving around 350 meals a day. There's a bus that goes in town and then four routes out in the country to deliver meals. And all those people are helping out, the cooks prepare, the custodian parents will jump at bands on the bus, deliver the meals, and also the parents helping all the club bikes, that is very much appreciated, all the work that they're doing. We have our elementary opening. Right now, we have 27 applicants. We're looking at interviewing next Friday for that position. As far as activities, everything is on hold till May 4. We're thinking that we'll learn more this week about what's coming after May 4. So any questions? Greg?
No questions, Derek. Thanks for your report. And I should have mentioned this earlier too, but between, I know Derek and Lauren and Brian and John and a number of you, many of who played so many different parts. The way things were coordinated from the school to show our community's appreciation for Dr. Richardson was absolutely phenomenal, and I know there's a lot of people that work behind the scenes to connect those dots, but what was done was an amazing and fantastic thing, and I just wanted to express my appreciation. Thanks, Derek, and the rest of the team.
Now being said, there are a lot of people that helped make pineapples, made signs. I know if I said name of names, I'll leave people out, but there's so many people that contributed, and that's what makes our community so great, so thank you to all those people.
A enrollment, we're at 420 students at the end of March. So we're down a little bit from the beginning of school year. We're at 425 to start the school year off. One thing to add to my report is an art opening. We have an art opening here, point eight seven at the high school, and we're taking applications at this time. Hopefully, we'll interview in the next two to three weeks. Two big items, prom and graduation. Prom right now we postponed until we hear more. See what outcome is there. And graduation, our goal is to have graduation. We just don't know what that's going to look like right now and when. So we'll kind of hear what's going to happen here for the remainder of the school year, and then see how it's going to look in June, and then come up with a solution for graduation, but we will recognize our seniors. MCAT testing, there's no MCATs. Distance learning, it's been a learning experience for all of us, our teachers, students, and parents. So we've had some bumps in the road here with a few things, but we're working them out. Overall, it's been going, I would say, pretty good. It's not perfect, but we're trying to make the best out of the situation that we can control, so. Mid-quarter is this Friday, and that was changed just because of our two weeks there. We didn't have any student contacts or planning, so we changed it. We went to a week, it was April 17th, we went to April 24th. And thank you, thank you to all staff, students, community members for all their support last week, helping out with everything. And it was very well done, showing our appreciation to Dr. Richardson and support to the family. Dr. Richardson, great boss, great leader, great person. Been greatly missed, and I just want to say, behind every great leader is a great spouse. And I want to say thank you to Mrs. Richardson for sharing Dr. Richardson with us. He spent a lot of evenings, times away from home, at events, activities, and we do appreciate her sharing Dr. Richardson with us. Any questions? Thank you. Brian? Robert?
All right, a few things. I want to say thank you to Dr. Ed, too. He truly was awesome to work for and with. Little story of the get a chino corn story. I was headed somewhere to go get something downtown, and pop in the truck, I look over at the parking lot, and I see this thing standing by this car, and I kind of like, what, who is over by Dr. Richardson's car? So I drive over there and roll the window down, and I said, hey. So I drive over there and roll the window down and I said, hey, if you see any suspicious characters around, you call the office right away. And he's in this blow-up unicorn thing and goes, I'll keep an eye out. And that was it, that's really what's it. You'll be missed. We're working on summer LTFM stuff, I was hoping to have approved tonight, but we got enough things over. We'll do it in May, we don't have anything that's really pressing for time as far as a big coordination, lowering or anything like that, but we do have quite a few items and there'll be good updates to our school district. We're also working on summer maintenance items, some routine things and just some catch-up things too. Our custodial crews are working at both schools. We have a crew at the elementary that every night they go in and sanitize after club bikes and the cooks being around, office staff and just people being around, so the area around cafeteria, around the kitchen, the club bikes room, a couple of times we've had to move to another room because they've had greater number of kids, those get sanitized every night after the, after they're out of there, so they're doing a really good job of that. We also have crews over here that come in and sanitize the office and other areas that are being, so we're vigilant on that and trying to do our part. One thing is the street project that last month that I informed you guys about, that extends from third, which is between the fire hall and the school, wraps around first, behind the high school and over to fifth, on the south side of the high school. That may start earlier due to the fact if we do not resume school, they might be able to tear into that, plus with that earlier spring or more average spring, I guess. So where, when we find out from Brian, Jerry, whatever, on your guys' meetings, we can give those guys, go ahead and tear into the whole project, so. Thing with that is we'll hopefully we get a sooner end date on that, that it doesn't take all summer long, so, want to have any questions? Yeah, Shada is canceled for this year, so that was our big event and then we'll see when we can resume using the facilities for weight training and other practices and stuff like that, but talking to Derek and to Brian, we can access all that stuff from the east side of the building, through door, two or three, so nobody will be in that construction. But we'll have to wait till we get the green light on that. Okay, thank you.
You're next.
All right, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Perfect, how about, see my screen?
No, yeah, you're still smiling.
There you go. How about now? All right, that, this is my better smile right here. So from a treasurer's report, we continue to receive the state aid today in our Miss Laugh account for the March, for the month of March, we received by just a little over a million dollars of which I took six hundred and sixteen thousand to meet all of our obligations. At the end of the month, we have three point three million dollars sitting in our investment accounts. Miss Laugh put out a big statement that even though the economy is not doing the best, they're doing everything to diversify the risk to make sure that we don't lose any potential dollars, which is really good to hear. In our OPEP trust account, we started with one hundred and fourteen thousand, again, we took a little bit of a hit. We, we made thirteen dollars in dividends, we lost twenty dollars in fees. So we left a little bit in our investment there. Overall, in our investments, we're sitting pretty well. Again, I keep reminding you guys, month after month, that two, two million dollars out of the Miss Laugh investment account belongs to that anticipation which will pay back in September of this year. In terms of the general fund and all of its obligations, for the month of March, we had five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in accounts payable, that included all, all, all checks and wires that run through the district. Terms of payroll, we had three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. There's a little bit of increase and if I'm not mistaken, in this particular payroll, we paid the settlement from the settling the teacher's negotiation, so that's why you see that, that little bit of a fluctuation there. Terms of cash, pretty moderate, you see that cash on hand was negative twenty-eight thousand dollars. Don't be alarmed, I made a wire transfer to make sure that we're never in the negative, just the board report shows that. Petty cash, cash account, not much of activity, we started with twenty-two hundred dollars. We spent sixteen hundred dollars and right now it's at five hundred and sixty-one. The primary use of this particular account is to pay reps because we have no spring activities coming up. I think the account's going to be dormant for the next couple, two or three months. Do you guys have any questions on the summary of our cash flow before I jump into the rest of the report? Collateral report, again, we have substantial collateral backed up by our bank to make sure that in case of default our money says guaranteed, this is very crucial at this point in time as everybody is a little bit of panic regarding the, the just the status and structure of our overall economy, so we have substantial collateral by the bank. Journal entries that we've made for the month of March, the primary one you see here for safe schools. The shift that you see in, in this particular one is that we opened up a social Lutheran, Lutheran social services account at the district level rather than at the building level because our social, social service personnel serves the entire district, both buildings, not one specific, so really this is just the shifting the cost. The big one that you see here that says move to fund eight balances, due to Gatsby eighty-four coming out, we're also required to go through every single one of our scholarships that will eventually go into fund one. So what does that mean? It means that in fund eight, we can only keep scholarships where we have a fiduciary responsibility. There is a legal agreement that somebody brings and then we sign and we have very little administrative review. The majority of the scholarships are going to have their own reserve account moving forward in the general fund. And there's not going to be much of a difference, they're now just going to be reported in fund one. I've been going through a lot of old records of ours and, and I think there's just two that we have a fiduciary paperwork. The shipper scholarship and then another one that I can't think of the top of my head, but that is the big journal entry that you see there. Lastly is all the payables, so this is all the payables that went through, through the month of March. Again, pretty normal, pretty normal month. One thing that Ed asked me to share with you guys was, he wanted to start tracking every single cost related to COVID nineteen. And can everyone see the Excel spreadsheet right now? Okay, so we've been tracking and monitoring it pretty closely since schools closed down and the first governor orders went out. We've paid out in salary about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, that is for those employees that are hourly and the governor gave us the okay to continue to pay, so that's what we're tracking. We're excluding teachers from here because we have a, a contract in place. The other thing that we're tracking is food, so far we spent over thirteen thousand dollars in foods, which we are then submitting claims to the summer food program as a waiver. Very unique process, it's never been done and still a lot of, a lot of hiccups going on. Two days ago, Trudy and I, our food service director, went in there to try to submit all the meal claims and the system crashed because the entire state is trying to go in there and do the same thing we are. So it'll be, it'll be a little bit of time before we get everything situated. Supplies, we've spent just a little over three thousand in supplies, this goes anything from cleaning supplies that, that Trevor and Steve needs to keep our, our building sanitized to whatever else was, was brought to my office with the title COVID on, on top. Equipment, very little, about a hundred and eighty-nine dollars, I believe this was just a paperback purchase order for a teacher that needed it for those students that don't have access to internet. That's what that was. In terms of transportation, all the gas receipts that came in this month totaled up to about five hundred and eighty dollars. The one thing I haven't accounted for is the number of miles that we're putting in our vehicles, that will be more of a year-end report. But again, you know, we're, we're trying to be as diligent as we can to track every expense, so hopefully there is a federal relief program down the road where we apply for some type of reimbursement. That would be something you need to see, but this is just for you guys to be aware how much we're spending on this particular particular pandemic problem that was, that was raised. That's all that I have for you guys, other than to thank the school board for being so supportive during this time and for Jerry to call us that morning and say, guys, I'm here, I, I'm ready to go, what do you need and really for all the, all the community, it was was beautiful to see that. Thank you.
Yes, you can hear me as well?
Yes.
Yes. Well, again, first of all, certainly I'd like to offer my sympathy and condolences to you as individual board members, you get very close to a superintendent in a hurry and, and it's very, very tragic. Also to the Richardson family and the district and the community as a whole, Ed was, he was a lovable man, he was a good guy, good guy. I got to know Ed a little bit through the mentoring, like we talked a little bit about and, and I, I believe you, the board passed a motion in August to go out for an operating levy and superintendents kind of live and die on an operating levy, that's a lot of work and a lot of effort and that's basically one-on-one, we, we went and crafted the message and he went out and along with Rudy and the board and the community to pass that and that is it's a testament to the community's support for you, so and, and his leadership, I think, was very well received in that. And, and just moving on into your administrative team, the amount of time I've spent with them, very impressed, very a lot of empathy for the family, the community and, and we, I keep pushing them to, they need to step back and reflect and take time for themselves as well, take care of them so, so they can take care of others, so you really have to keep pushing them to think of themselves as well. Very compassionate group of administrators. Just a little bit of intro of myself, if you have any questions, please ask, you know, I've been a, I was an educator for forty years, I've been retired for a year, it's a pretty good gig, I kind of like it. And I was the past thirteen years superintendent at Fergus Falls, I was at West Central Area fifteen years as a principal and, and then five years as a superintendent there, so eighteen years as a superintendent and we're living on Lake Lyta and my wife and I live in there for the past six years, I guess now, but we've had a family cabin out here since nineteen fifty-nine, so not many of you grew up in Lawndale, in Lawndale with me, there wasn't many of us there, so. So Pelican Rapids is home and I, I, I'm glad I can help you through an unfortunate time, to be honest, so if there's any questions, that's pretty much all I, I had right now.
Anne, Brittany, any questions? We seem to have lost Greg, but I think he's going to be back. Yeah, we're trying to get him back too. We're kind of almost done. Anne, did you have something? Were we going to adjourn this Zoom meeting when we're done and then start a new one or just continue with this one? Continue, okay. Well, while we wait for Greg, upcoming meetings, we have a work session following this meeting. And then we have a finance committee meeting, May fourth at five P M. So does that still work for you, Brittany? She nodded yes. Brenda, I believe you were on it too? I have it on too. We have a work session, May fourth at six P M. And we'll kind of spell out a timeline in our work session on what we'll be doing on, on the May fourth. And then regular main meeting, May eighteenth at six P M. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and we'll start, we have a motion by Anne. Yeah, okay, motion by Anne, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion on adjourning? You read no discussion, all those favors signify by saying aye, I'll take a roll call. Brittany? Anne?
Hi.
Brenda?
Hi.
Hi. All right. Meeting is adjourned. I think we'll take a few minutes and wait till Greg is back on board here before we start the work session, should we take five or ten, do they might need a break? I mean, Brittany, what do you think? Five minutes? Okay, we'll be back in five minutes, so let's be back at six fifty-five, does that work?
Yep.
Did Greg lose us?
Can we be muted right now or?
May fourth is, the, the admin team in the morning will review this and give any thoughts. Then there's a, the budget meeting at five and then the work session at six and basically you'll be selecting the candidates then. So then that next day, May fifth, we'll get all the interviews lined up for the eleventh. Thirteenth, we'll be able to put in times. Fourteenth, eighteenth, doesn't give you much time negotiating a contract. Then your regular board meeting, you'd approve it, that would be the goal. Don't be surprised if that contract doesn't get negotiated. It might take a few extra days, you might have to have a special meeting, you know, just one item, come in, approve and, and move on, so that's something there. I'm scrolling down farther down to the bottom now and looking at questions. I have semifinalist questions and then I also have finalist questions and I guess I'm going to, I'm going to pause there. Any, any thoughts? Before we jump into the questions and review questions?
Don't hear anything.
Did everyone get an email from me inviting to take a Google survey? Yes. Okay. So what the survey is, it's, it's, it's a Google form is what it is, it's a Google survey. And basically what you're doing, if you, if you get into the form, you can just click on it, so when I send it to you, it'll just be right in your email and you just click on fill out the form and, and you'll run in there, you'll, you'll just select who you are so we can sort this, no one's going to know how you rate the candidate. You'll just select who you are so we can sort this. No one's going to know how you rate the candidate. I'll just, I'll have that info, but we won't be sharing that with anybody else. So then you just assign the letter. So if it's candidate A, B, C, whatever, you fill that in. And then you rate them on leadership, vision, instructional leadership, communication skills, character, their business managers, you know, finance, budget, facilities, transportation, those things. Community focused and then your overall impression. And this is all just paperwork. You're just seeing their PDF paperwork. And then, and then do you recommend interview or not? And so once you send, when you fill that out and just hit send, it comes to me and I'm then able to collate all that data. The Google forums actually collates the data that will, I'll be able to share with the whole board. So sometime Monday morning, I'll probably be sending you a spreadsheet of where everybody's at. And so we'll be able to keep a good track of, of everybody that way. Any, any questions on that?
Nope.
So, so John, you know, the way I've got it set up here, I'm way down, I'm on the interview, the semifinals interview questions. The way, the way I have this document set up, so on the left-hand side, it's SB School Board. So I will, I'm I'd like you all to be involved in asking questions. So what I would do is do a little random draw for the first six. And then after that, just continue with that same group. So if we have Anne and Brittany and Greg and so forth down the line. And, and then what I'll have in here across the top where it says candidates' names, we'll have all six candidates' names here. So then you'll have one sheet to work with when you're, when you're going through the interviews because the the whole idea is you want to be able to focus on the candidate and reading their body language and it's hard to do in a Zoom. I noticed I'm twitching a lot, by the way, and looking around. So but so, so that way we go through these questions and that's, that's kind of the whole thing. Go through the questions, have them at the end. I always have an opportunity that they can ask questions. Excuse me, for the board. And then also I guess I like, I always like to ask a summary question where, all right, why should we hire you as superintendent? And use that as a summary so that you can kind of wrap up everything. But I guess, John, I'll let you, how do you want to do this? Do you want people to? It's hard to wordsmith via Zoom and 10 people. Do you want to have the questions now for a few days and then email the team, the whole school board or I guess I'm open to how to do this to finish off the questions. I'd like to have this done prior to May 4th because that's going to be a busy time. So if we could get these questions nailed down, that would be a next big step for us as a group. I'll be quiet. I'm going to mute.
No. You know, I've kind of glanced through them. Like, do we see a lot of changes needed or do we have to? Gary, you can unmute. Do we, do we need to narrow it down to less questions or do you think this is a proper amount?
You know, I think the best going to an hour and 15 minutes, I think we're good. I think we'll be able to do that. And you know, and that's part of the the interview process too. Can they succinctly give an answer to you or not? But I think an hour and 15 minutes, you know, probably I'm hoping for like an hour five of questions at the most and then you get 10 minutes in between candidates. I think that's, I think it's doable.
We are the ones, just us, ask the questions, not the admin team?
Is it just the school board asking questions or the admin as well?
Yeah, no, I think it'd be just you. We'll just rotate through the board.
When we did this with our last search, like for each candidate, a school board member read the same question. So there was consistency. Is that important?
That is correct. So in this document, if you're looking at it, so question number one, I'll put the initials or the name of the board member that's going to be asking the question and you'll do that for all six candidates or how many ever you pick to interview. Yep. So then you can kind of word, I always kind of like to rephrase things and, and you know, it's, it's easier that way. Make it your own type of question. The key is you have to ask the same question of everybody. You can't be messing around and switching questions.
I think we kind of just went down the line how we're sitting as far as what order the questions got answered or asked. This will be different.
Well, it'll be differently. Yeah. So Zoom will be an issue as far as that type of thing, but I, it won't, it won't matter. You got to keep the candidate guessing a little bit.
Why don't you just go down and put initials behind and let us know?
Yep.
You have to just run us, run down the list and put it down there.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you wanted one, you know, some people have one person has asked the questions, but I, but I think it's, I think to get a connection with that candidate, I think you should be asking them, you should be directly talking to the candidate at some point. Each board member should be, I think. And that gives you that opportunity. You'll probably each get three questions the way it looks. So it'll, it'll work out well.
I want to just clarify because he just said Zoom, but like the candidates are going to be here.
No. Minnesota School Board Association, everything's required to be on Zoom.
Yeah. Make it very hard.
We'll, we'll find out at the last minute here, probably if they make a change on that, but the the School Board Association is, everything has to be done Zoom. And I don't know if that means one person or two people or it can be in the school board room there, the district office room, or, or all of us have to be Zoom. I'll do some research on that and find out. I think if you're practicing the social distancing rules, I think you're okay probably, but I believe all candidates have to be on Zoom or online somehow.
Could we put them on stage at the fine arts auditorium and then we sit in the audience?
You know, I'll, I'll, I'll do some research on that. I'll, I'll find out if we could really, really distance.
Might be pretty intimidating too. Spotlight on.
Yeah, exactly. The hot one, the heat lamp.
And then on the top, on the top there, how the scoring room will be like 5, 4, 3, 2, 1.
Yep. It's right at the very top. It says right below the date there. So five is the highest, one's the lowest. And basically it's five is distinguished or, you know, excellent beyond. And then one would be unsatisfactory, I think would be your, your guide.
Now, if we don't have any issues with these questions, should we just move on or do you want us to continue to take a look at them and maybe tweak some if we think we need to do that?
That, that's up to you. So I guess if you're, you know, I want to make sure you've got a chance to look at them and probably it's more of what's missing rather than what's there. I think they're all, you know, they're, these are, you know, we didn't write them other than a few about Dr. Richardson and diversity. So I think the questions are solid, but what's missing for you as a board that isn't being asked is probably what I would be looking at. And then so if you, you know, do we want to set a, a date that you have to get questions to me or suggestions? And I'm guessing anything that you send, we can weave into something here or slightly modify a question here to make sure we get asked what you want.
Yes, I like how they, the ones that are stated kind of almost look like chronologically just kind of lead into I don't know, pretty important points to us.
Covering. Thank you. That was the intent, but yeah.
Yes, when I, when I first saw these and I have questions in my head, all the ones that I had in my head were here. So I can't think of anything that were missing.
I guess my only comment would be is number 15. If we had something different, that would be one I'd probably replace since we've just been through all of that. Don't foresee that in our, hopefully, future.
I hope you're right.
This is Greg here. Unless it's extremely material, I mean, I'd like to have, I'd like to consider a deadline to review and just, you know, maybe for many of you, you're, you're confident with regard to what's in place now, but I don't know, if we have time and it's, and it's not going to be material as to the integrity of the process we got to follow. I mean, with the end of the week, we can offer our comments to Jerry. Or I don't know how, whatever, I don't know what approach would be the appropriate approach to take, but.
Greg, that is fine. In fact, even into next week is, but I want to be able to come to you with all the completed questions and we fill in the names on May 4th. That's really the end game there. So, so I want you to be able to read these, review these. And I'll beg to differ you on that one, the one that you commented on because it really what you're looking through there is their communication skills. It's really a communication question and, and how they went through the process and and everything's, you know, but we can certainly change it to, you know, referendums or other communication pieces. That, that's kind of what we're trying to get across here, but but we can tweak any of these. That's for sure.
I can respect that.
No. If you give me Jerry till, if you give me May 4th, that means May 4th, I'm going to be sending you some thoughts on some, some questions. So that's why for me, I mean, I, I don't want to bog down the system because I haven't looked through them. And I was just thinking, I guess personally for my own procrastinating self to speed up that deadline, at least from my perspective, maybe everybody else can.
4:37 on Friday for you, Greg. Everybody else can, yes.
That's fine. That's fine. I just.
Yeah, that, you know, the sooner the better. Right. I just, you know, I know we're doing a pretty tight timeline here. It's aggressive time, right? But it's very doable. So, so I want to move forward, but I don't want to rush. I want to be quick, but I don't want to rush you. So I definitely want you time to read these questions and, and own them yourself. So, so please do. So end of the week, early next week would be ideal. So like by next Monday would be perfect.
That sounds good. Otherwise it would probably get close to crunch time when you get towards the end of the week. The second week with all the apps coming in and nipping and tucking things there.
Yeah, that's, that's what I think is, we're going to start getting busy with apps, we hope, and getting that information in. So.
So early next week. Sorry, Greg, I stopped that again.
Mike and I can't see who's talking, but I'm, I think I can distinguish the voices, but it sounds like Mike Florzgren, John Carger, Anne Peterson. Brenda, I haven't heard from you. I don't think with regard to the questions, I just to get, to give myself some perspective because I'm more concerned with how they answer a question more so than the nuts and bolts with the actual question itself. So I'm not looking to dissect every single question by any means, but with regard to all five of you, all five board members except me, do the questions appear to be pretty close to what makes sense to all of you in light of what we're we're doing in terms of interviewing?
Yes.
This is John. Yes, I kind of do, but I do want to at least take a couple of days and just kind of, if I think of something here down the road now that we're brainstorming. So I do think we could have a few days to make sure they're good.
Well, it doesn't sound like anything jumped out at anybody in terms of, I know Anne, you had made reference to 15, but Jerry had given his response and it sounded like maybe you've become more comfortable with 15, but as far as everybody else is concerned, right now, nothing, nothing extreme jumps out at any of you in terms of the questions or any omissions.
Nothing jumps out at me right now, no.
No, not for me.
Okay.
The admin team still there? Brian, Eric?
Yeah.
They're good. They're off in the corner.
We've got to look through the process of going through the questions and help you. No, we worked on that last week.
So the, the process on the day of the interview, just to, just so you know, again, we'll find out if we can be in the auditorium and have the candidate there or not or and spread out, but, but right now I'm pretty sure it's Zoom. The public has a link just like they did tonight. So, so you will be invited. And I'm not sure how Bill is going to set this up. If we have to, if we have six candidates, do we have six separate Zooms? I'm assuming. So we'll probably have to do, he's got some homework too on that. And then the, the audience will be able to view it. They will not have communication directly to you during that time, but it does have to be an open process. I've worked with Barb. She's going to have all the postings. So all of these are open meetings. So you have to post all of these meetings, but it's, it's, it's open. And, and so I guess that's part of that, the information, that big sheet about, you have to be a little bit careful about what you're saying because everybody is open. So especially when doing the six, you don't want to say, well, this is our guy because everyone, if it's on tape, all the candidates could go and watch the other candidates. And then if they hear the board deliberating, oh, they've already decided on this guy and they might be a finalist for you. You know, so you have to be just kind of careful on, on, you know, you look at, you state the facts. We like this about this candidate. Negative here, positive there. Those things go through them and then, then you'll make your decision on who you're finalizing. So you, you have to be open and honest, but yet sometimes hearing too much about, hey, this is our guy and we've got to get this guy. Not, because not all board members might feel that same way about that candidate. So we'll, we'll talk more about the, the process when we get that and help guide through that when we're, when we're doing it. So is there any questions on anything? I didn't have, I think that pretty much ran through that report that I had. If everyone's reviewing the questions. I, I think the process is well on its way. Brian and Rudy and Derek, we've gone through all the questions together. We've gone through a lot of these processes together. So they're learning through, through all of this too. And they've had good additions to, to the questions.
I seem to recall there's a list of things that we're not able to say during our meetings in regards to the candidates and their informations. Can, can we get a list of that prior to that meeting?
It's in that link. So if you go to that Friday report and if you look at, let's see, it's in the April 20th, a work session agenda. It's PR superintendent information. That is all there and, and I will also send that as PDF. So yeah, it's, there's a long list of do's and don'ts, isn't there? Yes.
We should be able to just click on that, right?
Yes. If you are in the live document, you can click right on it. If you're in the PDF, it won't work. But if you're in the Google Doc, you can.
Greg, Brittany and Brenda, I would highly recommend looking through that.
Yeah, I, I see it. I just, I click on it.
Click on it. I got a little window. I clicked on that.
Edit link, you're right. I think I got it.
Yep.
Open link. All right. Yep. Diane, that gives us all the information on what we should say and not say.
Yep. It's eight pages long. There's, there's a lot of stuff in there, but it's got some good hints on how to process your thoughts. And so, so when we pick, so when we go through the six candidates and we're sitting there at the end. how to process your thoughts. And so, so when we pick, so when we go through the six candidates and we're sitting there at the end of the day, uh, you know, you're going to hear comments from your administrators, you're going to hear comments from uh, the other group, and then you're going to deliberate on your own, and then we have to sit here as a group. Okay, who do we pick? And really what they're suggesting is, all right, uh, call out the herd a little bit, if you will. Is there someone who's obvious that we would not move to the next level? So you sort of get, um, get down to the, the two or three. Like I said, it's when there's three, you, with six board members, you can really split up your votes. So I, I would take the time to really deliberate hard to, to get it down to the two, um, and uh, that, that would be my suggestion. So, but it's, it, it takes work. You got some homework coming up right now, uh, but uh, I think it's a fairly short timeline, so we should get it done uh, fairly soon. And, and the goal here would be is a, a July 1 hire, but you know, with the times, the way they are, where kids aren't in school and things going on, I'm, I'm wondering if there can't be some arrangement where that person would uh, you know, spend some time, some hours with the admin group and, and me, me passing the baton off here uh, sooner than later, so that other person can get in sync with your, your admin and, and start meeting people.
And then the finalist questions, uh, do we move on to that, Jerry, or do you have something else?
You know, those are, I guess, the same, same thing. Uh, I, I think the board should review those um, in, in the same timeline. I guess I was thinking we were talking about both groups. I'm sorry.
Okay.
The, the only thing that uh, I kind of took out, a lot of times, a lot of times in your, in your finalists, you, you give the candidates a question or, and make a presentation to you so you can see how they can uh, form their thoughts, articulate, uh, you know, speak to you. Um, but we, I could talk with John some people and it, and it's, a two-day turnaround is very difficult. So if you're going, give us the vision for the next five years on what you'd be doing and um, it, it'd be pretty hard to turn around a really good uh, presentation. So I think we, these questions in the finalists, I, I think are meatier. There's some, um, there's a lot about school board and, and um, superintendent relationships, um, you know, specifically to the PR job, Pelican job, is human resource question. Um, you know, we, yeah, so they're, they just seem to be a little uh, your first round is more uh, general education and, and giving, getting their character and their leadership, their vision. And this one really, I think, uh, you know, really uh, goes deeper, I guess would be the best way to say, on the candidate.
On the finalist round, would we ever let them see the questions like 10 minutes before they interview, just to go over and collect their thoughts? Or do we just start uh, from scratch or fire them off when they get here?
You know, in, in Ferguson, they, they just put the questions right in front of them. They, they give them, they give them all the questions. So uh, that, that is a personal preference, uh, what, what you want to do.
Any thoughts, sir?
My preference to lay it on them last second. I mean, just, just to maintain some consistency, unless we're absolutely super accurate with regard to giving questions beforehand, I don't know, unless I misunderstood your, your thought or, John, did I misunderstand that?
Nope, nope. I think you got it correct, so.
I mean, I don't know how to regulate it, but Jerry, you said that does happen, or did you say it doesn't happen?
Well, they get the questions as they sit down to be interviewed. They don't get them prior to the interview. Right?
Gotcha. That's what I.
Yep.
No, I'm good with that.
I'm sorry, good with what? Which, which way?
I'm just firing them off as soon as they sit down.
Okay. All right.
And then how long would each uh, second finalist be? Same timeframe or allocation of time?
You know, I think, I think we're looking at that uh, hour and 15 still, and then a 15-minute break. So it gives you, it gives you some leeway. Uh, you can go 15 minutes longer or 10, maybe 10 minutes longer. Um, but I, but I think that's a lot of time. I think um, some other things you need to tag, when you get down to the two, you know, how are, you know, site visits, um, to be honest, I've, I've never been, been a big fan of the site visits. Um, I think you can do a lot by making connections with people you know. So I think when we get down, let's just say it's the two uh, board members. Who do you know that you can contact about this candidate in that community? Uh, admin can start talking to people. And, and so we just need to start um, uh, figuring out this person, uh, who, who isn't sit, who wasn't named as a reference that could give you an honest opinion about the, about the candidate. So we need to do some research there. I typically like to have the references done prior to the finalist interview. So, so that way, when you go and you select your person, you want to be able to start negotiating with them and hiring them. You don't want to be waiting around to see, oh, we better make sure they check out. Um, and that's not, that, you know, that's um, the background report, I'm not talking about that. I'm just making sure that you know who you're hiring and is it the person that you want? So, so Monday, Tuesday will be a busy day. Uh, Tuesday, I guess it's the 12th. And, and Wednesday, before they come in, making sure that we know who these candidates are and are they, are they, what they're presenting themselves to be and, and are they, are they the next superintendent for Pelican Rapids?
So if we do references and do a little background before they do their second round of interviews, let's say you do some background and there's a few things that, you know, don't look as favorable. At what point do you bring that into the conversation? As far as, okay, you know, after you do, after you do your second round and then uh, when you're starting to collaborate with your other board members, then you go over, this is what I found in the background or checking references? Or when do you bring that into the equation?
Interesting when you're on camera, isn't it? Uh, you know, and they're recording it. Uh, I, I would say when you're deliberating, so like if you have your six, so you, you're talking about your six candidates on May 11th, you're at the end of the day. I think you need to bring forth that, uh, you know, I've been contacted by this, you wouldn't say the name, obviously, uh, but there's concerns about this candidate regarding this. Uh, bring it forth. So, so definitely, uh, you know, before you decide on your finalists, you, that information should come forward.
The, the first round of finalists, you do it before check references, or would you do it before the?
I don't, I don't think you're, you know, I, I think we could do some checking on this. Are you talking about the semifinalists, the six people?
Yeah, that, or when's the best time to check the references and build that route? Before the sixth interview or before the?
You know, we're gonna, you know, the admin team and I, and we're going to know a lot about the six is what I'm guessing. Uh, so we, we can do some checking on that. But I think uh, for the most part, I, I, I think when you get down to the two, um, so I, I would, I would wait until you get, get to the two and just do uh, quick checks. People are usually, um, they avoid your questions. Uh, they're, they're afraid of lawsuits and all that happy stuff. Um, so, so I don't think you're going to get much about uh, the references. It's, it's almost best if you, you have some uh, teachers who know other teachers in, in those school districts, uh, other administrators. You might know a board member, you know, you do some checks that way. Probably gets you more information than, than the actual references.
Makes sense. Think of anything else regarding this? So basically, we look at uh, kind of just doing a once-over with the questions, getting back to Jerry before early next week. And then as applications come in, we'll get them by PDF and we'll screen them by letter number and then fill out the survey. And then uh, May 4th, we'll kind of cruise and uh, all over the finalists. Just kind of trying to summarize all this, so.
That, that is correct. So on, on May 4th, we're talking about candidates, the letter. We, we can't bring the names in at all. So no one will know. So if someone's watching this, no one will know who candidate A is, B is, whatever, other than you as board members, because you'll have the file, um, and, and the admin team. But if someone's watching that, they shouldn't be able to pick on, pick up that it was this person from this community type thing. So, um, yep. And then, then we give them the courtesy. Then the next day or that evening, we start making calls already and setting up interviews. And then there'll be a press release uh, to the paper stating, these are the candidates that are being uh, that have been selected to be semifinalists for the position. Here's what they're currently doing, a brief bio, you know. Here's their name, here's the district they're at, uh, that type of thing. So it's, it's pretty brief.
Can we go over now, who do we think should be on the school group, or should we let Brian and Derek and Rudy come up with?
No, I, I think, I think if you have suggestions, that would be good.
And then uh, do we let one of our uh, uh, high school students uh, on the school board are taking this too?
Certainly appropriate.
It is, or isn't?
Is.
Is? Okay.
Brian and Eric, do you have people in mind for that group?
For student?
And staff?
For the staff, yeah.
You know, I think we talked about, uh, talking about the union president and then uh, for teaching staff, to gather a couple of teachers and then uh, talk into our non-certified rep. Talk about getting some non-certified involved, kind of their leaders, talk to the leaders and then go that route.
That sounds appropriate to me. This is Greg, so I defer to admin on that.
Brittany, any thoughts? With one of our school board rep students.
Yeah, something like this. I think we'd be good to touch them to see those two. Also worried about having too much input.
Yeah.
Money's things sometimes slows it down.
You know, I have a, a statement that we give to the community members, uh, that, that group, uh, you know, really stating their role. And I'll probably, you know, if they're going to meet at 8 o'clock, I'll probably jump in that Zoom as well and kind of explain, you know, this is their role and, you know, looking at positives, negatives of each candidate. Uh, you are not the decision maker here, you know, just reminding them that. And, and they understand it. They just, they appreciate the input uh, that they can uh, help, uh, help find the new persons coming in. So I think that, that, they'll be good. Typically, you get lots of good info from that type of group.
Think of anything else relating to the hiring process, or I think we're good for now?
Hey, one, just clarification, because I'm having a little trouble hearing Greg Larson here again. I, my thought was, my position would be for the board to defer to administration with regard to staff, certified and non-certified, but I'd, I'd like the board, my position would be to suggest that the board look into the community members. Is that what was discussed? I'm sorry if that's what was discussed and I may have misunderstood it.
Yeah, we kind of discussed that and uh, Jerry kind of mentioned, made a reference that, you know, we're, we are the community or elected by the community. I guess, what are your thoughts? Or do you think we have a good candidate to have a good pulse that would be good for this, or do you think it'd slow the process down or muddy the water, or we got too many people involved or any, I don't know. What, what are your thoughts, Greg?
And, and you're talking about having one community member?
Well, that was an idea. I mean, nobody's really come up with anything there.
Otherwise, we are the community members.
Okay.
So I wouldn't need anybody else.
All right. I, I get that. Yeah, I uh, I was thinking, uh, there were multiple community members. That was my misunderstanding. So I'm good, I'm good with uh, if, if, if the majority of the board's perspective is to not include a community member because we're serving them as elected officials, I'm good with that.
Okay.
In an effort, in an effort to make the process more efficient, if I understood that correctly.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll agree with you there too, Greg.
Yeah, I, I think we're still trying to honor that, that 10, you know, uh, I'll have to find out again, like I talked about, is if your groups can be more than that, but I think that was the recommendation. So, so if you have buildings and grounds and food service and a couple of teachers and a couple of pairs, uh, it, it leaves you room for a couple. So if the school board does have uh, people that, that should be invited, that'd be very appropriate to email, text, uh, one of the admin team. That would be great.
Sounds good.
And then should we move on to one more thing that, uh, there's a memo you would uh, uh, put out for staff on the Google Docs?
Uh, that was, uh, Brian and I were working on that. Um, really, uh, I, I think the uh, confusing part for staff might be, I am the interim superintendent in name and, and then, but what's, what's an acting administrator? And, and also a little bit to introduce myself. So that was sort of the memo that uh, Brian was going to finish off and, and send out tomorrow. And I'll, I'll let, I'll let Brian talk if that's what he's thinking too.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Yep, we can't hear you, Brian.
Oh, no, I think that would be good, that email that out to staff so we communicate what's going on and kind of how we're moving forward.
Was that okay, John? Was that?
Yeah, yep, yep.
Good.
I think that's a good idea. And I guess I don't have anything else. You guys? Jerry, do you think anything else before we wrap it up?
No, no, I'm uh, I think we got a lot accomplished tonight. I appreciate your work on this. So just uh, for your homework then is to review those questions and get back to, get back to me and, and then I'll, hopefully I'll be sending you uh, quite a few emails here in the near future with the candidates.
I appreciate your help, your light work with us.
You're very welcome.
Greg, do you have any questions before we wrap it up, close?
Nope.
Brittany? Not in your head, Ann, not in your head. Okay, Brenda? Well, I don't think we need a motion to adjourn. We'll just adjourn. There is no argument. Uh, you guys have a good night. Thanks.
Great, thank you much.
Thanks.